I call the order of the Westlake City Schools Board of Education Work Session Meeting for Monday, October 11th, 2021. Roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
Stoll.
Here.
Finugan.
Here.
Wazinski.
Here.
Fearnot.
Here.
Mr. Kraft is not joining, Mr. Seaman.
Right. Okay, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion and a second for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Fearnot.
Yes.
Finugan.
Yes.
Wazinski.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
Motion carries.
First item up is the Legislative Liaison Report.
There are a number of pieces of legislation that are right now in works regarding, and the biggest one I really think we should talk about today is the Backpack Bill that was introduced. Um, there's a number of questions that I have sent on to a few people that I know are involved with some of it. Uh, basically what they're trying to do is a universal voucher for all students, and there's a lot of questions about what's going to fund it and how that's going to work and whatnot. So instead of for vouchers only of districts that are failing or certain requirements for economic, it's going to be for all students. Yeah, so there's a lot of questions about it, uh, but it was just introduced last week. So that's the big news going on right now. A lot of other legislation seems to have stalled out. Right now in the House, so.
Was that, was that in the House that it was, uh, started?
Yep.
Oh.
But this is the big one that's going on. Uh, there was an OSBA alert that just came this afternoon about it, but I was following the news on it yesterday and, you know, my big question that I've been asking is about, would they, would these schools still be getting the additional funding that they're already receiving right now, or would this replace some of that? Most, it's so there's a lot of questions about it, and there's also a lot of questions going on about where this money would be coming from because they're saying they wouldn't be deducting anything from school districts, but.
Who's going to pay for it?
Exactly. That's what people are really wondering.
Is there something that they're asking us to do as individuals or, or a board?
They're right now asking, you know, reach out to your, um, elected officials and, you know, say don't support this right now. Um, but right, so far it's just been introduced and it hasn't even had its first hearing, so.
Yeah, I think we should, you know, monitor it and see where it goes over the next few months because it could take many forms.
Exactly, and that's sort of where, it just got introduced. There's no schedule for a hearing yet, but keeping an eye on it.
I need, you know.
I, I have a question on that, and it's probably too early, but. So for universal vouchers, that means that the kids could, anybody could get a voucher and go to any school they want. Yep. So do you have to have open enrollment for that to happen?
So my understanding of the Backpack Bill, and this is very preliminary, but my understanding is the money would go into a, um, like an education fund in your name that you could use for private, uh, education. You could already, you could still do community school like you do now. I saw no provisions, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fearnot, I saw no provisions where it requires open enrollment.
Correct.
Or for public school districts to open themselves to students outside of the district. But this would be a way to allow private school vouchers. It would disband the Cleveland Scholarship Program and another, uh, one of the scholarship programs. Uh, but it would keep John Peterson in place as well as other scholarships.
Ed Choice.
Ed Choice. And then, um, but then students could, um, you know, take that money and go to a private school to help offset the cost of private school, including tuition books. Uh, I think there are a few other things that they had mentioned in there.
Tutoring allowable expenses, but yeah, really what it amounts to is so anybody in Ohio would be eligible, not just those on Ed Choice or the Cleveland Scholarship.
So today is an example of all the, the parents who choose to send their kids to parochial schools.
Yep.
Yeah, that would be a big number for Westlake.
Yeah, I think it's fifty-five hundred dollars for, um, uh, elementary, and I think it goes to seventy-five hundred dollars for, for high school.
Yeah, last time, uh, I talked with someone, I think we have one of the largest for capital due that go to parochial schools in the western suburbs. So I don't know exactly what that number is, but it would be significant.
So there's no information, they don't have any information as to how that they're going to pay for this bill. So I think this is going to be a while. I don't see, especially since they just redid the education funding. Last session, it, I just don't know how they're going to be able to quickly get this done, so. But it's definitely something we'll keep in mind.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I got for right now.
Thank you. Next committee report up is Student Achievement Liaison. Is that Joe?
We had a number of national merit. Commissions, semifinalists.
We had, how many commended? How many commended? How many semifinalists? Fifteen total. Great number. Yep. Anybody have anything else on that? Next up is Policy Committee. Haven't pushed any policies through? Nothing to report, okay? Finance Audit Committee.
Uh, our last night, we kind of, we chatted, uh, about our meeting, but a lot of that revolved around Mr. Koshbar's presentation.
I'd like to briefly touch, uh, tonight, we had, uh, we finalized our, our, well, our bond sale was done, um, uh, two weeks ago, week and a half ago. And, uh, we did sell our bonds. We did very well on our bonds. Um, we had sold both a taxable asset bonds and tax exempt bonds. Um, when we look at it, um, uh, over the term, between now and 2049 is how long, very similar to like a mortgage on your house. When you look over a long period of, you know, thirty years or so, our bonds would, uh, mature pretty much annually, uh, each year between now and twenty-four nine, uh, twenty forty-nine. And the overall savings that we're going to see during that time period is going to be eleven point nine million dollars. So, uh, it, it was, uh, it was a good move to, to move forward with this. We typically look at, what's called is, uh, present value to, in today's dollars compared to the money that is being paid over time because money in the future is worth less than money today. Okay, so in today's dollars, um, it's about a, a ten, um, ten point two million dollars in net present value savings. And when we look at, when we consider doing a bond refinancing, we look to say, okay, what can we save based on present value? Um, and that helps guide us if it's worthwhile. Industry average is about three percent, a savings of about three percent of your overall bonds. Um, savings there. We were at just over ten percent savings. So it was very much worthwhile for us to do. Um, we had kind of, uh, monitored, monitored this over the entire pandemic. If you remember, we originally passed some refinancing, uh, authorizations back in March of 2020. We've monitored this over the pandemic. We targeted it because we had a number of bonds that were coming, uh, available for us to refinance based on call dates at tax exempt rates, which are, uh, savings generally to the district. Uh, so I'm, I'm very pleased to report the sale went well. Uh, it will be finalized, um, I believe next Monday, Monday or Tuesday is the formally issued of, of the bonds. Uh, Dr. Stoll, as President of the Board, signed the paperwork tonight along with Dr. Goggan, the Superintendent, myself. Um, but it, it went very, very well. And in fact, we actually saw some retail investors as well, which I always appreciate. I don't see details, of course, but we had some people who went in through, uh, Steefel as retail investors. So I'm hoping it was our community members who had that opportunity to buy and invest in Westlake's new schools and, and took advantage of that. But, uh, we were able to do that, and the, the large buyers of our bonds, uh, were very large reputable companies who I think, uh, speaks to the fact that, uh, we had, uh, we hold a very high bond rating and were viewed, uh, very positively, uh, as a, a good investment for, for companies to hold. So, um, we're pleased with that, and I'm, I'm glad that it went through, and we're going to see our interest rate drop, uh, as an average interest, interest rate of about two point eight two percent over the term of the bonds. So, you know, that's pretty good as we look at even, you know, like, uh, home financing rates. Um, so all in all, I think we did very well. So I appreciate the board allowing us to do that, and I think it's the right move, and it's the long-term investment. Again, I always have to put disclaimers on things. The one disclaimer of this here is we don't see the twelve million dollars, one point nine million dollars coming into our coffers. This isn't going to increase our general fund budget, our, our general fund, uh, account. This isn't going to increase or decrease any of our accounts. Uh, bonds are issued, uh, under general obligation tax, which means that we collect the tax money. Each year we set the tax rate based on what we need to pay. So what this does is this will save our residents and our commercial property owners, uh, tax dollars in the future. So you will pay less as, as a whole for the community. You'll pay less for those bonds that were, uh, that were paying off for the next thirty-plus years or just under thirty. So, um, but I'm glad we were able to do it and it did go well. So thank you.
Anything else on Finance Audit? And next up is Curriculum Committee.
We're meeting on Wednesday.
Yep.
One class.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, uh, next item is Community Outreach.
Did everybody get an email inviting to the, uh, West Cleveland Muslim Association, their open house next week?
Yes, and I will be attending.
Okay, I signed up. I know.
I signed up.
Joe is, Dr. Goggan, did you get it?
I don't think I got that.
Doesn't sound familiar to me.
I can forward.
I was gonna say, I will forward it to both of you right now.
I think it's Wednesday. It's on Wednesday.
It's a week from Wednesday.
Week from this Wednesday.
You have to sign up because they're doing limited capacity, so, but, uh, click on the RSVP link. I'm excited to see if this, uh, Senate bill.
Yep, Don Columbia wrote.
It's the old, uh, Bailey's.
Valley's FX. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, anything else on community? Okay. Um, moving to the next item, Board Discussion Items, Facilities and Equipment Capital Planning. Do that state.
Yeah, thank you very much, um, for the opportunity to give an update. Um, really what I wanted to do tonight is to give a little bit more clarity to our, um, Permanent Improvement Expenditure Program. Um, you know, I wanted to give a, a little, uh, snapshot of our vision and then how the funds are allocated. Um, our Permanent Improvement Levy was passed in two thousand sixteen, um, by the citizens of Westlake. Um, it's really a dedicated revenue source um, for the repair, replacement and purchase of facilities and, and large capital equipment. Um, those taxes bring in about one point one million dollars to the Permanent Improvement Fund. Um, the Permanent Improvement Program I have allocated into two different types of, uh, categories. Um, the first is a predictive one, one that, that happens annually and, and we could, uh, predict that will be an outlay, um, every year or maybe every two or three years. And then the other one is a projected or, or I will use, um, the term, uh, as needed as well. Um, because it could both be something that may be an emergency that pops up that we'll need to spend, uh, funds on, or it could be something that we will project and, and plan for. Um, the projected expenditures could include, um, uh, purchases, um, like roofing, uh, large equipment replacement. Um, and it could include, um, things that, uh, might pop up like a boiler repair or replacement. The, uh, allocations, uh, percentages, um, um, what I did was I, I had broken it down into, um, the two categories. So the first one for the predictive. Um, my goal was to find a number, um, that will cover about seventy-five percent of our largest expenditure. Our largest expenditures are, um, replacement of roofs when they, uh, when their life expectancy comes to an end. So in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, we had two, uh, very big buildings plus a renovation of DIS. Um, those roofs, when they come due, um, will be a big ticket item. Um, I found that forty-five percent of the one point one million dollars, if saved, could, um, get us seventy-five percent of those roofs replaced. Now, why seventy-five percent? Um, it will be very difficult to try to replace them all, uh, to save money to try to replace them all when their warranties are up. If we could get at least seventy-five percent of the way for those large, uh, capital outlays like roofing or mechanical equipment, it'll jumpstart, um, the, it'll jumpstart those programs to help pay for it. Um, the, um, the balance of the funds then, the remaining fifty-five percent would then be put in that as-needed or projected expenditure category. Uh, just a quick little pie chart, uh, to show you that, um, uh, it's, uh, five hundred thousand, uh, versus six hundred thousand for the predictive versus as-needed. So what I did next was I went ahead and, um, took a look at what our current funding commitment was for permanent improvement dollars. Um, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had purchased some bulk bus, uh, replacement. There were ten buses that we had, uh, had a lease on. Um, that is being, uh, still paid off until twenty twenty-three, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and you see that's at a hundred and forty-three and a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year. The other one that is going on until twenty twenty-nine, we showed here until twenty twenty-six and beyond, is, uh, the manuscript note. And those were the, uh, dollars that were spent, um, for the elementary school building project upgrades. Uh, when planning for the project, um, there were certain things that were value engineered out at first. Um, we wanted to make sure that we still put those, uh, pieces into the building. They include things like aluminum windows versus say a wood clad window, um, flooring, low maintenance flooring upgrades, things like that. We found that there was value to getting those right out of the, right off the start for the building project, and we use some PI dollars in, in the manuscript notes for that. So again, that hundred thousand dollars per year is already, um, allocated until twenty twenty-nine. On the next slide, I, I show you just by year, uh, an overview of the types of things that will be going on annually for the predictive expenditure category. Now, in the category, you will see in twenty twenty-two, we have three bus replacements, um, for our DIS and Bernison, uh, campus, uh, to crack fill, reseal and stripe parking lots, um, a vehicle replacement, uh, for the district. And then I have, uh, future set-asides for large capital improvement. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we only have a couple items, uh, bus replacement and a future set-aside for those large capital improvements. So you see as you go twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, you'll start to see some of these things repeating. Uh, the reason that why we have, uh, this in the predictive, say for asphalt, um, uh, seal and re-striping and crack fill, it's, it's, it's as much a preventive maintenance as anything. Um, the more you could take care to treat your parking lots, uh, sidewalks, and keep them in good repair, it'll save you down the line if you had to replace it, uh, tear it up and, and put in a whole new one. Um, the bus replacement, um, we have that. We're trying to do, uh, annual, uh, cycle on that as well to keep our average age of the fleet down to around that twelve years, um, per bus lifespan or lifecycle. Uh, the expenditure list I have here is only out for five years. Um, I actually do, because this is a working document, I do have this that goes out all the way to twenty forty-four. Um, mostly it's, uh, roofing projects, uh, again, some asphalt, uh, replacement in areas and large, uh, equipment that may need to be replaced. Again, with most of our equipment having a twenty-five to thirty-year lifespan, the more we could put it on some, uh, predictive, uh, uh, replacement, uh, uh, categories, the, the easier it'll be to save for it. On the, uh, next slide, I have, uh, the as-needed or projected expenditures. And, um, again, annually, you will see a lot of different, uh, items in the first couple of years. If you remember me saying in twenty twenty-three, we only had, uh, two predictive, uh, replacements, the buses and just a set-aside. It's because we have a lot of them that we sort of targeted for twenty twenty-three, um, for the, um, as-needed project expenditures. Um, because this is a working document, especially in this category, projects could move across the timeline. What we see now are items in the, uh, per year. Um, we may feel that as we get it to twenty twenty-three, something rises to the top as a priority. We have to move maybe something from twenty twenty-four and twenty-five into the twenty twenty-three year and vice versa. We may move stuff further on down depending upon what the need of the district is. Uh, something to note, each year, there are more expenditures than there are funds coming in. So I did not attempt to prioritize everything by year. Some of these things in this category are, uh, rise to a cad, rise to, um, if they're needed as an emergency or not. So what we have now say is a mechanical piece of equipment replacement. Or, um, for instance, if we wanted to do some sidewalk replacement at Hilliard, which is, uh, one of them in twenty twenty-three, that might not be high on the, on the list for us. We may want to actually either move it down or move it to another year if there are other projects that, um, that are a higher priority for, uh, for the board. Um, the, um, the next slide I have is just an overview. So this is a total both predictive and as-needed, uh, projects, um, for our permanent improvement. So you'll see them all totaled up here. Um, just a couple of things to note, um, you know, again, they're not prioritized, um, and that, um, um, this does not also include additional funding that meet, that we may get for projects. We may get donations that could help pay for certain projects. There may be even grant opportunities, safety grants that may pay for things and not come out of the permanent improvement, uh, fund at all. So as we look at doing these from year to year, we will always seek additional funding sources, not just the permanent improvement to, to pay for some of these things. Um, I went fairly fast through this. Um, I'll be happy to pause and see if there's any questions regarding more individual projects that we have on here and, uh, be able to answer any questions you have.
Good question. Um, if you look at the, the list for twenty-two and twenty-three, um, it looks like obviously there's more projects than, than money available. Uh, will the board need to prioritize those at a future meeting?
Um, I, I, I think prioritization could come two ways. There could be some smaller projects that we may be able to, uh, come to agreements internally with administration that we may be able to pick off either through maybe some general funds or some other, uh, funding sources. But yeah, some of the larger ones definitely will need, uh, feedback from the board. Um, I also want to include, um, other outside groups, um, to take a look at this, uh, list as well. So I want to make sure I capture everything possible, um, from our stakeholders.
The other question was bus replacement. I see we've got three. Are those purchase buses or lease buses?
Those would be purchase buses, correct.
And is that to replace the, the leases that will be coming off?
It, no, actually, they would be replacing our oldest and, and ones with most highest in the fleet. We have some buses that are early two thousands or late nineteen nineties. Um, we have some that we joke could get, um, um, stored plates. So we want to get those out of, uh, out of the inventory and, and try to refresh those with new ones.
And I want to make a clarification on the terminology real quick. Um, when we use the word lease, uh, this is not your typical car lease where after three years, four years, five years, whatever, you turn it back in. Uh, we use leasing, uh, as a way of financing, and we own it at the end of the lease. So all of the leases that we've done, whether that's been copy machines, whether that's been, um, buses, the football field, uh, the turf itself uh, was structured through a, a lease, uh, uh, agreement. Um, when we use the word, uh, lease, typically we're in a lease-to-own situation to where we have full ownership.
Um, speaking of turf.
Yes.
When does, I've not seen the.
Correct. So I would, this is a five-year look at the program and. Correct, and I believe it is twenty, I believe it's, uh, twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. Let me just do a real quick check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, in twenty seventeen.
Twenty twenty-eight, excellent.
Yep. And that would be roughly twelve years, I think, because we installed it in twenty sixteen.
Be correct.
I greatly appreciate you taking the time and putting this together to, you know, especially, one of the, the comments was historically that Westlake wasn't doing a good job keeping their schools and planning for these types of large expenses, and I think this really does clearly show that we are finding for these large expenses and being prepared.
Absolutely, and, and the, the detail that I have behind it has, um, estimated costs. Um, some of them are from contractors and, and admittedly they're, they're, uh, a look now with some, uh, increases, annual increases for when they may come to.
Quick question on, and I'm not trying to nitpick anything or everything, but, uh, DIS Playground?
Yes. So DIS Playground is in the asphalt category because it is their asphalt playground and back of the building.
They really don't have a playground.
Yeah, I, it's, um, it's classified as their playground space. Um, it is in disrepair and needs to be resurfaced.
Okay, would it be just a more asphalt and striping, or would it be just?
It would be, it would be, uh, uh, ground down and re-topped, leveled off and re-topped, just asphalt with, uh, play lines on top of it.
Okay, is there anywhere we can make some improvements to that area?
We can.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I know that's been an issue for a while.
Got it.
And Parkside demolition?
Yes.
Does the city own that?
So one of the conversations that we want to prompt with going through this with the board is finding out what your intention is for, uh, Parkside. Um, as well as you'll see in twenty twenty-six, we have the Fieldhouse that we talked about a little bit at the last board meeting.
Yeah.
Um, Parkside, as you allude to, is, uh, is owned by the city. Uh, there is a provision in our leaseback from the city that, um, because we did a ten-year lease, I think it started in twenty eighteen. Um, I think it was twenty eighteen. Could have been late seventeen, but either way. Um, and so it was a ten-year lease, dollar-per-year lease, but there was a provision in the lease agreement that if we stopped using the building, okay? Um, uh, for administrative or, or classroom space, um, we could only hold onto it for two years. And after those two years, we would have to make the decision to either turn it back to the city, hand it back to the city, or we could buy it back from them for a one-time payment of seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, we left the building roughly in January of twenty twenty-one. So we're about ten months into our twenty-four month period on where we can make a determination on the, uh, Parkside building. So it is looking to get feedback from the board, um, to see where you are. I believe administratively, we're on the same page, but it's getting feedback from the board to make sure that we're all on the same page on what we do with it.
And I think a big factor is being able to communicate with the city to see if they do get it back, what their intention is with it and to kind of see where that's going, um, what they're going to do with it. So I don't think we should, like, make a decision right now, but I think it's something that you really should start to consider because we do have fourteen months.
We do.
You know, so, but it is something that we should have on our mind, um, especially as we're talking about potentially more vouchers coming in and, and that sort of thing. I would want to know what the intention of the building is.
Well, and especially since they've not done anything with the old board office.
They use that, I mean, that can be trained, but I know what you're saying, yeah.
But they're using that for police training, but I mean. But they're using that police training, but I mean, it's not really functional.
That could be a function.
That's a significant investment in that building. And and if they did, if it did, remember the other, the other clause or provision that I think I would say was was built in is that if they do that, then they would, we would get another two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That was two hundred, two hundred thousand. And the reason for it is because, you know, when we were working on that land exchange. There's two values you can have, land only and land with structure. And we agreed to have that be a land only. And so if they do utilize it as a structure outside of breaking down doors and running dogs through it, you know. But if it was going to become a true office or something. And I I I would think that that's still in in their intent, just based on what they're using it for. It's not, you know, and we were fine with that, using it for police training as well.
Correct.
But but I get your point. But yeah, to to be able to get an idea of what it would be useful.
Is there a administration thought or meaning at this point as to, you know, what?
I'll tell you my
Your your team is?
Yeah, and I think we're on the same page with, you know, if if they are, if the city is going to take it back and either level it, use it for fields or something, they can, they could take it, but if it's something where additional schools would go in or something like that, then we might as well buy it back because we'll be losing money. You know, we'd be, we we with the services, we'd have to pay and and all that sort of thing. Be in our best interest to have it, knock it down, use it for fields ourselves.
Beautiful piece of land.
Yeah, it's a gorgeous piece of land.
The other thing in discussion to the city, is it worth trying to restart the discussions about Reed Field? And also, we're happy to renegotiate the contract regarding the diving well?
Well, when it comes to, and and so I think, you know, even even today, you know, Mr. Kosovar and I met with W P D with some thoughts and everything, you know. The city has been really good working with us and and we were really enjoying that relationship. And but we also respect that they have big decisions to make, you know, what they're going to do with the golf course, what they're going to do over on Bradley with different fields. So I don't think Reed Field is up there for them right now. I think they would be open to to conversations as they get to it, but I think they have a couple of other decisions to make prior to being able to commit to something like that.
There's going to be a big change for them too, from January.
Council president.
Yes, council president and several different council people.
Three maybe.
So
Definitely one, I mean, because
Definitely.
London with maybe Amy Valka coming on board and also Dwayne Van Dyke. So definitely those two.
And then Ward too.
So something, can I jump in and point out a couple of things? A couple of things that I I agree with what Liz said earlier, Dave, this is great. I I think this is something that from a community perspective, as people hear that one point one million dollars is coming in, it sounds like, oh, well, you have all this money to do all of these type of things. But even the way he laid it out financially, so folks know that for the next few years, a hundred and forty thousand is coming off the top for the lease purchase of the buses. And then until twenty-nine, a hundred thousand dollars is coming off for the the elementary improvements that that we've made back when the elementary school was built. A couple of other things we've been spending money on is you you see Basset now. I just drove by it today. That grass is coming in pretty well. It looks like that that's coming out and obviously the Dover School Building is down. And then if you look in twenty twenty-two, the first bullet on there is Holly Lane. And and that is something we had considered before about potentially if we needed a preschool or or something like that. But as we go through Holly Lane, that is also a very significant investment to be able to bring back online as well. And if we do need preschool rooms, we could use parts of of this building, it's already gone through renovation. So I believe we will be coming to the board to discuss Holly Lane and taking that down. And two things I want to say, even if I've said it over and over again. Is, you know, if we do take down Holly Lane Elementary, we are keeping that property. It's not something we're trying to sell for development or anything like that. And the second big question I get about Holly Lane is we are not moving the cannon at this point. We have no
Moving where?
The cannon.
I get a lot of questions about the cannon at Holly Lane. And, you know, and if you picture, if you go by what you see at Dover Elementary where it was, you see the playground still standing, you see a nice field. If you go to Basset, you see the parking lot still there, you'll still see the playground there. And if we did take down Holly Lane, you would still see the playground and you would still see the cannon. I have talked to people about wanting to renovate that a bit, to make it a little bit more safer, a little less rusty. That's wonderful. And if eventually it moves somewhere else, that's fine, but as of right now, the cannon isn't going anywhere. But I think the funding clarification is important because, you know, when we take down each of these buildings, that's an additional four hundred thousand. So when you think about these these past, when it passed in two thousand sixteen and we're able to begin collecting on it. Even these past few years, we've had two hundred and forty thousand dollars coming off the top with the lease purchase of the buses and with the manuscript debt. And then you have to add on top of that, an additional four hundred thousand dollars for a building coming down. So that right there is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming off of that one point one million. So we haven't had access to all that that funds as we've been doing that. So those are the points that I wanted to make up. And and also, when Dave mentions that he's gonna, he wants to meet with some of the support groups. But, you know, it's also built within our strategic plan. That's why he's very clear on here that this is a working draft. So he's done a great job getting it started. And then we can shift things around based on what we talk about with our support groups and our strategic plan teams and then be able to bring more to the board.
I I can't see that little print from here, but
Is it on here?
I can't, no, I couldn't get it on.
Oh, I can, I can get it to me.
But what do you have in mind for future technology? Because we have no idea in twenty twenty-six what's going to be happening.
Yeah. So so going back to our October of twenty twenty board meeting. We had met in at Parkside in the or in the cafeteria area there. As we talked through P I and purchasing through P I, specifically, it was revolving around improvements for baseball and softball. The board had given me the directive to utilize general fund for instructional technology. So we are utilizing, we have budgeted in our permanent appropriations at the board approved our budget at the last meeting. We are budgeting several hundred thousand dollars in general fund for technology.
Do you remember, Dave always come out of there.
But even there's some, there's some argument on on whether or not certain technologies should come out of P I because of their lifespan.
Correct. So a great example would be right now, you know, typically speaking, when you look at P I, P I is intended. Now, technology does straddle this a little bit because they've given some leeway. But generally speaking, P I is, it's something that you're going to do that will last a minimum of five years. So when we look at we generally use now a minimum of five hundred dollars. It really should increase as our capitalization per board policy has increased to fifteen hundred dollars, okay? But but the law is specific to five years. It needs to be something that you're going to do that's expected to last five years. So certainly, when we look at resurfacing parking lots, that's going to last, you know, a minimum of five years. While the the work that Dr. Zagrain and his team has done fantastic work with our Chromebooks. You you could argue if Chromebooks are going to last five years or not. You know, they might be on a quicker replacement cycle. You know, again, and I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying there's arguments for those types of things. So there's a good number of your instructional technology that's going to most likely fall under like your general fund. Your infrastructure is where you get into your more costly pieces and ones that are going to generally last a longer time period. Whether that's the wireless that they've installed or network backbone, things of that nature. But right now, we're funding instructional technology directly through general fund.
Okay, thank you. Would it be, would it be too soon to just see how my fellow board members are feeling about Parkside? Right now, what the feelings are? I mean, I know we have fourteen months, but that's going to happen pretty fast, believe it or not.
Well, we're here to talk about anything that's facility related.
So how are you feeling about this, John?
I don't know. I, when we went through the the process originally, I think that it was a good process. It gave us opportunities and options, which is what I think one of the things that we wanted. So I I think it was it was good that the team put together this option that we could make it to building and and buy it back. I think the city would probably be open to that. The city's always talking about more green space. They want green space. Anytime they can get green space, they buy it. So I think in in this particular case, if they they knew that we would turn it into green space, I think they would be very happy about that. The same thing with, you know, the corner of I think as well, they would probably knock that down eventually, turn it into a green little green space there. So I I think it would be a good option for a variety of reasons. But I think adding more green space for the city as well. Again, I, there's, there's lots of conversations that probably could be had with the city. Pertaining to, obviously, we have Basset. You know, I'll just, I'll just for easy semantics, you got a Basset Park, you got a Hilliard, well, not a Hilliard, but you got a Dover Center Park, a Parkside Park. All potentially. And a Holly Lane.
Holly Lane.
And a Holly Lane. So and I think if you ask a number of community members what they think of the idea of having community parks. I think that would be rated really high. So in that regards, I think with some conversations that we could have with the city, there's probably some pretty good creative discussions that could be had. So that it's good for the city, it's good for us and for maybe neither of us. It's it's a lot of out-of-pocket costs. So, I mean, the the city is well well positioned to take care of land and things like that. You know, we do it only because we have to, but the city is, that's that's kind of like part of their term. Parks Recreation Street Sewers. That's pretty much what they do. So I I would, I would be leaning more towards the idea of purchasing it back. But I used the word purchase only in that it would be a conversation to have with the city, because I think there's a lot of opportunities. As an example, we could, we could trade, you know, we could say, okay, we'll, we'll trade you a Basset for Parkside. You know, we both agree there would be parks anyway, so there's no no exchange of money or anything like that, similar to what we did last time. There wasn't really an exchange of money. So I think there are creative things that we could do. Unfortunately, you're still going to have four hundred thousand dollars to tear it down.
Why? And I think the city is better prepared, I mean, with, you know, to pay for the four hundred thousand dollars. If they intend to turn it into green space, as much as I'd hate to lose that land, because I really do think it's a beautiful piece of
Yeah.
of property there. We're talking about another million dollars by the time we repurchase and then tear down.
And and that's where, again, I think I, you you look at Holly Lane, you you look at Basset.
Yeah.
Dover. Well, but but Dover is kind of part of that.
Yeah, it's part of the whole campus. It's really pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, again, I I think there's good opportunities to have discussions to the point where maybe it is like a little monopoly or trading.
Yeah.
And doing different things so that, one, it's not affecting the community really, sure, except in a very positive way. And I think the city would be really open to that. They were open to, obviously, when we did the first land exchange. It's good for them, it's good for us. So I I think
I think there's definitely the, like you were saying, and 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 the mayor always says this, where, you know, especially with working with us. The the term that that he he uses is to to create that win-win-win. You know, the 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 win for the schools, the win for the city and the win for the community. You know, when you get in those situations where you do that, then we all benefit. And and I think that's been something that really has been nice, is to go in with that attitude. So these are conversations that we we do need to engage with with the city and see the best way.
Because when you, I don't know if anyone's talked through the the Bradley Road forty some acres that are back there, but a lot of that is wetlands. You know, if the city was ever going to try and do anything significant back there, it would be a big project. Which is, I wouldn't be surprised as to why they haven't moved on it yet. Just the wetland mitigation, let alone sewers, plumbing, everything associated with it versus, you know, you have all the land that now we're making available for parks. And it's ready to go. I mean, Bassett's a nice piece of property, be great. Same with Holly Lane. I mean, you throw in some extra athletic fields or what have you, and I'm sure the city would be excited about that. So I I think, I think we can accomplish, it's got to say, both of our opportunities to to get some positive things for the community. It's a long story.
And the mayor, have you planned to discuss this with the mayor? Because I know, don't you have?
Yeah, we we do. And 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 we have, we have not discussed Parkside specifically, that that's not been because like I said before, they they have their, you know, their priority list, just like as as they go. When you look at our plan, you know, they're very well planned. And and I know you mentioned parks and other things, but there's roads, there's obviously, you know, the police department, fire department, they just finished the community center.
Yeah.
So they've been really busy. And and so this particular conversation has not happened in in regard to specifically, you know, sit down and talk about the future of Parkside.
How would we go about that? Do you have to present something formally before the council or is it, would it be done more between?
To do what?
To find out what they plan.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, I'd, we'd have to, probably, they would have to probably do what we're doing. You know, it'd probably be a very similar process where they would have to have the the conversation like we're doing right now. So that their consensus comes about and and to do something like that. It is. I mean, it's a good place to be in. I mean, that it's, we're, yeah, this is something that, but but I think for us, and when when you actually look at the different, the the different graphics that Mr. Kosovar put up there. Is if you say we are going to buy it back. And then we are going to knock it down. And then there's a million dollars in doing that. And then two years later, you're looking at a fieldhouse renovation. Well, that money could have been used there. So these are all the conversations that I think we need to have. But I think it's good to get initial thoughts here, but like I said, I don't, I mean, we do have some time and it will come quickly. But we have some time to be able to go through these things.
Couldn't we just hear what?
Absolutely.
No, I I agree. I think we should definitely do something. I'm not sure. I think it makes more sense for the city to do that. I think they're better equipped financially with the ability to turn that into green space. But I I agree with, you know, we should make a decision on that the next year or so and move forward.
I would, I would think, I'm sorry, I I would think that after the election, first couple of months of next year.
Yeah.
Would probably be, once, once their new council is in place, council president's new, they're in place. They're, they're going to be feeling now themselves.
But it isn't something like we can wait three months before the deadline and say, oh, by the way, because they've got to have a chance to discuss it. We need a chance to discuss it again, so.
Well, we have the, we have the option. We don't need, I mean, we can, if we choose to buy it back, that's built within the agreement. So if we say we would, we want to, we want that back. So if we say we would, we want to, um, we want that back. And if you recall, um, that was put in place because at the time, the seven hundred thousand dollars was the land only value for that property. And if you recall, Center Ridge was, does not look like it does now. And so we, we factored in the uh, cost of like stoplight, uh, all these other type of uh, improvements that are benefiting actually everybody. But but it was aligned specifically with our project. And and so that's why if we we could, if we decided we're just gonna purchase it back, there's no approvals in that. There'll just be this body improving, saying we would like to purchase it back because we've already agreed upon a cost and everything inside our previous agreement. It would just be.
The timeline is quicker than a ten year.
Liz, how are you?
I'm fairly flexible. I I don't feel like we necessarily have to purchase a property back, but at the same time, there is that concern, especially with changes in state funding and whatnot. At the same time, I do realize, what was the cost of renovating Parkside?
It was a lot.
It was low.
Yeah, it was, it was close to a million, I think.
Yeah, that's how I was gonna say. It was, you know, so in some ways, I I don't necessarily see them necessarily renovating, putting that kind of money into renovate the building to right, I don't know what they use it for, rent it out, but at the same time, you know, purchasing and the cost of tearing it down is going to be expensive. I am flexible if there's some sort of, you know, negotiation regarding whether it's another land spot or whatnot, but I do think it is important that we maintain some property if we do need to build something in the future, because we do not necessarily know what our needs are gonna be in twenty years.
Right.
And and I think Dr. Racket has said that repeatedly, that our goal is to hold on, just like the folks did thirty years ago, Eric Boston, he was out. So, yeah, I would agree.
And I will say just that uh, we back onto the Dover Campus Improvement scene. I was over at uh, L B M S week or two ago, uh, volunteering at Hook Fair, and it was really nice seeing uh, the D I S students running around and utilizing that field now where Dover used to be. Yeah, just taking advantage of it. They had some outdoor time and all the kids were running around and using the playground also, and then also because the shaded area was all the way over by the fence, but it was really funny to, to see them utilizing that area. So instead of the asphalt in the back.
Yeah. I was just gonna come in, uh, earlier, Liz, they have come that a lot of the community members over the years have said, you know, that, Wes, the schools have, this board is like the schools go to have, which is why we built new high schools. And from what I'm, from what I'm told, it was primarily for the cost of the education. If there was something to be done, physical plant, building or something, or are we gonna be offering, you know, Spanish at the high school? We offered Spanish at the high school. The priority has always been the educational options for the students. And that's what's led, unfortunately, to where we were, but now we're in that place because we have the pinata where the previous boards did not have that. So we're actually in a much better position for basis, because we do have that. And we still maintain strong ideals, uh, putting student first, having an educational opportunity available to that person, just reading writing.
Great. Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dave? Anything else?
Okay, uh, next up, any general board comments?
I have a question. Um, I see Mrs. Wilson TV and Hannah for I D uh, at the beginning of the meeting. I know at L B M S and the high school, we issued student IDs. Are they also issued to students at D I S in elementary school?
I, I believe they are.
I would, yeah, I I.
I don't know about the elementary.
I know that you students have lunch cards.
Yeah.
Carry them on their person, they turn them in to the class to read, and then are issued down at lunch to go through the line, but I don't think they're expected to wear them.
What about D I S?
They, they have the lunch card.
Okay, but they don't take them home. Um, something we might want to start realizing is especially twelve and up because of vaccinations, they're asking in a lot of areas that you have to show your vaccine card in an I D. And a student I D is a eligible I D. So this is something, it's, I was just in New York City, and this is something that came up. And because Claire had her I D, it wasn't an issue, but this is something that we might need to start realizing. And also, if students need a new I D issued, would it just be at the office or do they have to come to here? I don't know who's got printing ability for I Ds.
So would this? Yeah.
Was their school picture on their I D and then it's in the office? We get the picture from last year.
Correct. But if they need a new one issued, who would, would it just be the office or are they only printed centrally?
We could, we could get it from the photography service.
Okay.
So if we need additional ones, we could get them.
Really, what it amounts to is that you're gonna be seeing a lot more requests for student I Ds and be real, and then once they approve vaccinations for even younger ages, you're gonna see more parents looking for student I Ds because of this. And let's be honest, student I D is a little bit easier than getting a passport.
I I tell you, going forward, I know, I know some school districts have, have gone that route, in which they have taken school I Ds and they're scanning them as they get on the buses.
Oh, yeah.
So they can account for who's on the bus.
That's good.
So, um, yeah, I mean, there there's, there's lots of pros, so.
Are we jumping the gun though, if we start to put the vaccination card on?
No, we're not.
That's right.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Yeah, to be, yeah, let's be clear with that. Let me, yeah. So what, what, what Liz is talking about is we have nothing to do, zero to do with vaccine cards. We don't do anything with that. What she's saying is that, for example.
I was in New York City, and to go into any restaurant, you have to show your vaccine card and an I D.
Yeah. So what they're saying is, um, and when you look at children, obviously, under sixteen, who wouldn't have a driver's license or any, any, the only I D that they would say, do you have anything with your name and picture on it? And many times, that is a school I D. So what she's saying is, if there are gonna be restaurants shows any type of place that's gonna require a card from someone under sixteen, they could use their school I D to identify who they are. So we have nothing to do with the vaccine card, but there, but she's saying you may get a request from people saying, can I take my school I D home with me because we're going here, we're going there?
And you're gonna start seeing that more because there are more places that are requesting this requiring vaccination or negative test and showing an I D to go with it. And that's even more.
Just more of a need of a child to have an I D.
They just need that I D to go with it.
But we wouldn't do anything with the vaccine on them.
No, no, we have, we have, we are now doing.
Student I D and it didn't be able to get this.
No.
With the way it is now, it's like, whoa.
No, 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 now, Owen, is this microphone on? We are, we are, we are not starting that rumor where we're putting anything like that on on our I Ds. That is, that is not happening.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any other board comments? Anything else? Hearing nothing else, I need a motion in the second for adjournment.
So moved?
Second. Vote call.
Adjourn at seven P M. Swazinski?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.